Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, now I hear you.
Alyssa, do you know if John Dewey was in the office today?
Sorry, I don't know.
He was definitely in today, I spoke with him.
Okay.
Oh, we are announced there.
Sure, unless he showed up at 6:30, I got it.
I sent out a reminder.
Are you coming to the meeting today? All right, all right, he's on his way up.
Okay, so as we get started here, 139 is the beginning of the recreation, park recreation budget. 141. Maybe 103. Do you have to take care of that Midtown Center? When I was there during the election, this huge spider thing showed up.
A huge spider thing?
It was like almost as tall as me, two legs, but weird eight legs.
Yeah, and we have to really talk to some pest control about that, don't get into it.
Yeah. Let's start with recreation.
Okay.
So let's go to the park. Is everybody ready?
Yeah, ready.
All right, I will call this meeting of the City of Kingspin Finance and Budget Committee, special meeting to discuss parts of the 2023 budget to order from 7:06 PM, November 1st, welcome everybody. Lindsay, is there anything you want to bring up to us? Any special highlights, any innovations, issues?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to first of all thank you guys for giving the opportunity to speak about my department and what we're hoping to accomplish next year. Some things that you probably already noticed or will notice this evening. We were looking to increase some of our contracted service designs. We anticipate doing more work and having some more expenses when it comes to plumbing and electrical work, tree work, things of that nature. So that's, that's one thing that'll probably stick out. We've seen an increase in a lot of our rentals and park usage, facilities. Seems like people are getting back out in the parks, hosting events. That's created some additional work on the weekends and evenings for our staff, trying to keep up with the amount of traffic, trash, debris, things of that nature. Programs, we want to try to offer more next year, expand some of the things that we're providing to the community, specifically the seniors, trying to get back into doing bus trips. We did one this year, went very well, we want to try to expand on that next year. Yeah, I think that's generally what comes to mind.
So how big was the change in your budget with the CNU CSEA pay rate?
Um.
It feels like, sort of like maybe half of the increase in your budget?
Is because of the salary raises?
Yeah, salary and maybe even a little more.
Yeah.
And all the benefits related to it.
Yeah, I mean, there was, there was an increase, especially considering the amount of staff that we have. But, you know, morale is up, people seem to be happy with the direction that we're heading in. So it's, I think that it definitely has, has helped with the general feeling of the department.
Great, anybody else?
Do you know any workers who are implementing that, right?
No, no new positions, generally.
I know that you have, are we on recreational or overall?
Overall.
All right, so you said that, I see the parks, so your salaries go up, that's by contract, that's the contract?
Yep.
In overtime, I know we talked earlier about overtimes of 14,000.
Yes.
Can you explain that to me? I'm not sure if you might explain it to the rest of the board.
Yeah, I mean, usually during our busy season, which ranges from April to the end of October, you know, we have staff on on the weekends, two employees on Saturday, two on Sunday, to just do the park and trail and buildings cleanups. We, we did notice a lot more trash and debris that we had to remove each weekend, especially during the June, July, August time period. You know, it kind of caused our, our staff to have to be in the parks a little bit longer, you know, taking care of any issues that might come up overnight, some vandalism that seemed to be reoccurring at times. The stage is being used a lot more, we're being asked to staff events. You know, it's, parts of it are, parts that I see as a positive, I think the parks are definitely being used more. But a lot of it is just trying to make sure that we're keeping up with the needs of, of the facilities and the trails and parks and stuff.
Good. I'm just going to mention, as I stated with all these departments that I'm there, if when and where possible, can you just control, if possible, control the, the fuel costs? And that seems to be going up, obviously with the price of fuel and everything. So I'm just making a general statement to all departments, and I see that, and, you know, this employees being concerned about that.
Yeah.
If possible, you know, conserve this fuel, try to. I see contracted services, I see that you guys got a big, you got a big Christmas wish. I don't know if we can jump to that, I can explain these things here.
Yeah, I mean.
I have here.
What is this?
Capital apples.
Yeah, we'll do the capital plan after we do the budget.
Well, her contract, her capital, I always told me, went to her capital efforts.
See?
Yeah.
Hey, we, we, let's just go through the vote first, and then we'll do the.
All right.
All right. Hi, Steve?
Yes, I don't want to get too far afield here. And it really doesn't have anything to do with this budget, or I'm hoping in some budget at some point in time. And it seems like so long ago, but right before COVID, before you were on board, Kevin and I had started looking at the interior of the Midtown Center.
Yep.
Specifically, the plaster work that's chroming and the grits that are, you know, without mortar and kind of just sitting there. I don't know if you know, we brought in a, like, a historical architect.
Yep.
The kind of guy that's along, so.
Yeah.
And then COVID hit, and, you know, it just kind of.
Yeah.
It stopped right there.
Yeah.
I'm hoping at some point in time, maybe, maybe we can get back to that. And I originally had talked to, Kristen was still here, about applying for some grants and loans.
Yeah.
And things like that, you know, some of the, some of the situation there, I, I would consider a dangerous.
Absolutely.
You know, some of the roofs are just kind of teetering, you know, 75 feet above the, you know, above the courts and, you know, so. You know, I don't, I don't want to go into too much depth here about it, you know, you know the issue. But I would like, at some point, you know, maybe we could get, get moving on that again. Somebody, somebody just recently brought up, you know, that has a child there, you know, playing.
Yeah.
In the league, you know, how bad it looked.
Yeah, the building is definitely not in great shape. I've, you know, brought, brought up these concerns previously. I was able to meet with a couple of specialists that deal with lead and asbestos remediation. I've also worked with John Schultes, we've done a couple of set visits, walkthroughs. We are looking to use ARPA funds as part of the, kind of to get the design and the scope of work for what needs to be done. We've received a quote for, to kind of get an interior finishes, finishes conditions report, which will kind of offer recommendations on, on how to move forward, focus on the priority areas, because the whole building is happening, but we do have to do it in phases, considering the size of the building. Right now, the kitchen is still underway, improvement and renovation project. That's expected to be completed by the end of the year, maybe into January. So that's kind of phase one at this point, and then we're going to move out into gym space and start with that.
Okay, and the only other thing, in general, I know it's always a hot topic. How's your, how's the vehicle situation? How is everything holding up?
Uh, not great, which is why we have a pretty lengthy Christmas list, as Tony pointed out. You know, I did provide some photos here. The, the trucks and pickup trucks and dump trucks that we're looking to replace are kind of just falling apart, which is resulting in a lot of vehicle maintenance that needs to be done frequently. So hoping that if we can get new vehicles to be able to replace some of these older ones that are in more of the worse shape, I think that it would be beneficial for the department, to a staff who uses them every day. These trucks are, you know, from 2001, 2003, 2006. Most, not all are over 100,000 miles, one, I think the worst is at 130. You know, two more passing around, there's rusting, there's things pieced together with paint, it's, you know, they're not.
They're just getting broken in.
Yeah. Literally.
There is a discussion for the capital plan. I remember Barbara Hill has joined in. Hello, Barbara, we're talking with Lindsay about the recreation budget, we're just page 139. So we're actually kind of just getting started here. Yay, all right, Andrew, you have some questions?
Yeah, the Everett Mars Center, is there nobody going into that, or is that just been moved around?
Uh, so all three of our community centers and playgrounds account have been combined. So you'll, you'll notice that the 7, 7141, it's kind of been changed to reflect playgrounds and recreation centers.
What was the name of that?
143.
Number.
All right, you guys, why all of that is.
Yeah, sorry.
All that money is for.
So all three, all three of the community centers have been joined with the playgrounds account. So all the numbers there reflect that, that merger.
These are the kind of the extra, you're planning on doing some extra stuff. Where will we see that those increases in the same thing?
Extra, I'm sorry.
Is it extra programs, extra in the beginning?
Yeah, so probably under youth programs, I think we've added, or requested this weekend. 7310, you'll probably see an increase in some of those lines.
Page 17.
There's not much of a financial increase, is there? There's not much of a financial increase?
Uh, no, I mean, mostly under the overtime line and that seasonal staff, there's a little bit of a jump to try to, you know, make room to have personnel to operate and run the programs. So for example, we have an employee who has a specified interest in baseball, and we've never really offered that program before, so we wanted to utilize the Metro Notable League, use that field, and try to offer some, some youth baseball clinics, try to focus on specific positions, and just try to get some kids that, that utilize that field, whether it's through the Boys and Girls Club or Mentor Me, and try to, try to do some, some more specific training for that sport.
Wait, so where are the seasonal employees going?
I don't know, page 157? I'm really looking at the.
No, well. You're taking out the recommended.
Season employees for youth programs has gone up by $20, $2,500.
For what, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so, but the, the number in, in adult recreation, it's like it's gone down this year.
That one, I believe, was merged with the parks seasonal line, so we just combined that.
All right.
Season employees on page 143, is that what it says?
Yeah, so everything is put in one line there?
Yeah, it may, I mean, most of our seasonal staff, especially when it comes to the adult line, it generally has been used for, you know, maintenance labors. Possibly at the zoo, it just, it seemed cleaner to have it all come out of one seasonal line. Whereas the youth programs is a little bit more specific to each individual program. So that, that's why we kept that one, that one.
This, page 140 of this budget says, yeah, you're getting two rec, rec leaders for 2023. Is that just because all these other things are being merged?
Yeah, we just, yeah, they were, one was in seven, you know, was in Midtown Center, one's around out. They just like put in the same account.
So on the, I think that's, this is the question, on the revenue side, is there an in, a substantial increase in each revenue size, in each of these programs? Are you increasing the fees and.
Yeah.
See, foresee more, you know, more programs, more people joining these programs?
Yeah, I mean, I think fees are probably going to go up. In general, it seems like we brought in more revenue than expected this year. There's more participation, there's, there seems to be more teens on our, our youth programs, as well as our adult leagues. I do think that with COVID, you know, it's very much still present, but people are starting to feel more comfortable planning in, in new facilities again, so we've seen a jump in some of those numbers. I mean, expect that to kind of continue in here as well.
Soccer field being used yet, starting yet?
Yes, yeah, yep, and with Deeks, you know, being.
Right.
Yeah, closed down this year, we're, we're trying to work with some of the, the local soccer groups to come up with a plan for the needs there.
Okay, any more questions with budget issues? Should we move to the capital plan?
I have a question, hi there. Hey Lindsay, Barbara here.
How you doing?
Good, where, I heard or, and sort of saw, the compostable toilets in the parks, are those working as compostable, or do they get pumped out?
So they, they do get pumped out. You know, we, we've run into an interesting situation with the composting toilets. They're not really composting the way I think they were intended to. And so we have started to kind of shift the more heavily used ones into traditional kind of porta potties. But even when they were composting, or we thought they were composting, they still, after a certain amount of time, have to be pumped and kind of drained out.
Okay, so they're not really, does that fall under parks and rec, or is that environmental? I don't know.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's kind of both, you know, we've worked with wastewater treatment, DPW, trying to come up with a solution, and it just, it, it hasn't been panning out the way I think, you know, folks thought it would back when they were purchased.
Okay, all right, that's all, just a green feature that seemed to not be happening, but I hear what you're saying. So, yeah.
All right, anything else in the budget? All right then, let's move to the capital plan. So yes, some of those vehicles there, they look a little decrepit.
Yeah, yep.
Never going to walk by in two clothes.
Yeah, I mean, we've tried to stretch it out as, as long as we could, but the amount of times that our, our trucks have had to be brought to the shop, sometimes it takes our mechanics a bit to figure out what the issue is, or waiting for a park to come in. You know, considering the mileage and the, the year on some of these, it just, you know, they may have really just run their course. And we don't want to find ourselves in a position similar to this past winter, where we're without one of our, you know, our, our trucks that are used for most of plowing, especially in the heavier type of storms, just create additional damage, it's not safe.
And what do you, what areas do you see that's, in the winter time?
Yeah, so we take care of all of our facilities and parking lots. We help out with the parking space downtown. We used to take care of the Midtown lots, but I believe DPW manages that now. But if they, you know, need a hand, we try to help out whatever we can.
The Midtown lots.
Like the Sea Deli, yeah.
Yes, and lunges.
Lunges, yep, A-Race, I think is another one. I actually think our truck has to take care of A-Race because of the size. I don't think that can get there, get a plow there.
Can we talk about this, so your ex for two one tonne dumps with plow and spreader? All right, what's, then can you just explain what the purpose of that for is there?
For being able to, to clear the, the snow from, from our facilities.
Okay.
Be able to, you know, take care of our, our parks, parking lots, the roadways leading into the parks.
Do I have to replow, you still plow them in the wintertime?
Yes.
And then the other major one is, is you're getting your ex for two three-quarter tonne pickup trucks? I don't know what the difference is.
Like a traditional pickup truck. So the, the dumps are the, you know, the bigger, kind of like using e-logs for clearing trash, getting trash in and out of parks.
They won't have a plow on them for the wintertime? Right?
Some of, well, I believe that some of them do have the ability to, to have an attachment added on, but the, the dumps are the ones that will come with the plow and the spreader.
What's a, what's a mini walk behind loader?
So that's, that's supposed to be for the zoo. The nature center needs, you know, to be able to move the zoo dew, you know, whenever they have a ton of, you know, mulch that they have to move. I know Mark takes care of a lot of the, the snow removal for that facility himself. Yeah, just to give them the opportunity to be able to, to do that, this is kind of a smaller piece.
I'm assuming it's passed in advance for the zoo program?
I'm sorry?
The non-passed in a van?
So that's, that's actually for, I mean, it's, it's for our environmental education programs.
Yeah.
So, you know, when we have smaller trips, or if we're using, using the van for our senior hikes, that, rather than having a contract out with a bus, we could just use the, you know, the smaller van to be able to do that.
So that'd be, I, I, I mean, again, I just have questions on it, because I want to skate steer loader. Where are all these different loaders?
Yeah, I mean, they all, I think that we needed a new loader, ours, our skid steer is, you know, was in the shop. We'd have to make, you know, order new parts for it.
What's a skate steer?
So a loader being able to, to pick up, I think it's just a different type of loader.
Hey John, maybe you can answer this question, if one's on the wish list, is this where you can, like, combine this stuff here and get a better deal, or is, is that what happens anyway?
In terms of bidding it out?
I don't, do you have to bid this out, or I don't know how it's worked.
Well, you have to be.
Looking for trucks, see, this one, the private trucks, this thing, I wasn't sure, like, we combined all those things to get a better place, I'm not sure. Looking for trucks, see, this one, the private trucks, this thing, I wasn't sure, like, we combined all those things to get a better place, I'm not sure.
Yeah, uh, well, first off, it has to be, all, all that has to be competitively procured, whether it's through a state contract, cooperative, uh, purchasing contract or the bid. To, except there's like equipment that potentially can be bid together, uh, but typically, typically you would bid most of this separate, like the one-ton dump, the two of them would be bid together, the three-quarter ton, um, I say bid would be procured together, the two, three-quarter tons would be procured together. Most of the other stuff will probably be procured separately. I just don't know that there's an opportunity for, you know, any economies of scale by grouping anything there. Because typically you have, you have expertise in different areas. And you're, you're probably procuring a lot of this from different vendors.
So it's just for like digging and falling different materials?
Yeah, okay, I see, yeah.
Good, so all these things are like little earth movers.
Say, oh, okay, okay.
Skate steer is like, it's, it's, the cab is not much bigger than for a person, but it's got a little, you know, scooper in front, like a earthy bigger cab.
Okay.
And then the mini one is one, almost like a, a long line.
Straight behind, like a wall behind.
Okay. Yeah, um, should we, uh, go to the wishlist? Are there any of these, these vehicles look pretty horrendous. Are you gonna, are you able to keep some of them in the fleet or give them to other departments to use? I don't think we can sell them. I don't even know if they're worth keeping, some of them.
I think they can be auctioned, right? Like some?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we can try to auction them off. I mean, Old Works has auctioned off quite a bit over the last few years.
Like this?
Yeah, believe it or not, there's, you know, i- i- if, if the department can't use them for parks, and it doesn't make sense there, I mean, auctioning them off, eh, you get them off, our parents, so it saves money there. Um, and there's usually some value to some group or person, uh, you auction them off. It just, it just depends on the condition of the vehicle, the age, you know, the age.
I used to work in an animal sanctuary and, I mean, my feet, it was like required for instance, I contracted me to travel around. So like I, if the, I just stopped by putting my feet through the ground, so they might take. Um, good, wait, you got any questions?
Yeah, yeah.
The, in that, I know you guys all started working on the budget over the summer, have you re-looked at the prices for these?
I don't know that we've looked since, I would say September was probably the more recent time, but, um, we tried to.
There's a good chance they've gone up.
Well, we tried to factor in any additional increases, uh, within reason. Um, we, we took a look at the increase that we saw from last year's, you know, just a percentage of what they could expect. Um, consulting with, you know, Ed Sweeney, um, he gave a pretty good estimate based on what we're receiving this time.
So Lindsay, if you, if you take another look and you find anything that between now and a wrap-up meeting that needs to be revisited, just, uh, what councilman?
Yep.
Did you date at the wrap-up meeting in September?
Twenty eighth.
November? Yeah, so we.
Are you thinking the prices of this stuff has really gone up?
Well, I mean, DPW didn't came back. There was an increase, I don't remember. I can never remember who he was.
I missed it.
They've been proud of it, and realizing that they went up.
A lot.
I read the amount, it was like.
There, there were two items that were increased by twenty-five thousand each.
My, it was part of the increase, so.
Uh, but these were the large packers that we went from four twenty-five to four fifty-one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Both of them?
Yeah, and then things that we, I believe we need to off, off that, so.
Well, the first probably.
Four fifty-one, right, four fifty-one was the quote now.
Yeah.
So I recommended a, a, a ten percent contingency of forty-five, so like four ninety-five. Um, realistically, you know, if you're wanting four ninety-five, we're only gonna borrow what we need and what we spent, so. We did try to ask all the departments to build some price increases for next year, so hopefully there's not, we did, okay. Yeah, just knowing the environment that we were in, so, um, you know, hopefully the packers coming somewhere close to four fifty, four sixty range of that's how it's how, but once again, we'll only borrow what we actually need.
How available is there for like this?
Um, it depends, I mean, some of it's taking longer, obviously, you know, the supply chain issues, I mean, they're starting to get on work, but, are worked out, but, um, there's usually quite a lead time to package and take, you know, a large piece of, and take a lot.
Anything else on the capital plan for Parks and Rec?
So this wishlist, this is, you guys will be able to get through with two, two of these piles and spreaders and two pickup trucks can help you out?
Oh, yeah.
And you won't be able to use any, uh, any of these other vehicles?
These are, these are the four of the ones that we would be looking to kind of trade out for auction.
Make it to another deal straight?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have, we also have one on the way, um, we're supposed to be receiving it by the end of this month, actually, new, um, new pickup truck, so, uh, so, so that definitely.
I'm assuming.
Of course, you'll see.
Would you be the one responsible for all the solar panels, the lighting department?
Yes.
We didn't talk about that, because we've already, but that's.
Oh, yeah, good.
If anyone wants to talk about anybody's month for, oh, no, for a community.
I had a question, what's the benefits of these solar panels, what is this gonna do?
Yeah, so we, we will over, I think the, uh, I think the payback time, or at least for the Midtown Center solar panels, I think the mayor anticipate that we'd save savings in two years, um, so over time it will save us much more.
So you would have them in town?
Yes, that was just completed, I think, in September.
Now these solar panels are pretty dready pool, is that gonna heat up, either heat up the pool or something, or is that just for, this for the electricity?
It'll be for, for the electricity, yeah.
The Midtown Center, was that a grant?
Yes.
No, there was no, no grants for these, the likes. Um, I don't know.
I believe there was potential rebates for.
Yeah.
Out of the gate.
Like I think we just got a rebate, uh, for the street, the streetlights, I think there was about a ninety-two thousand dollar rebate that just came in.
If they can be some grants or something out there for, you know, for municipalities to use. And especially like, you know, in parks and stuff like that, environmental friendly and all that stuff, but there was no grants out there, so we look for this and that.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're always looking at different grant opportunities, um. Now, the, the reimbursements that I'm seeing here for the kayak dock, uh, the EV charging stations.
Yeah, I mean, any, any rebate that we get, we, we reduce the payoff, any borrowing that we have on it. I mean, the extent that we haven't come upon yet, but yeah.
So what we're adding to the annex?
Say again?
The what we're adding annex.
The DPW.
SDW. Oh, so I thought some DP two, that, that one, solar panels, what we're adding to the annex, I thought that was DPW, man.
Yeah, but I mean, if, if, the project itself is probably being run through our department, sustainability.
Sustainability. So what's the electrical work like in, in those whole places with this, uh, is this part of, is this, yeah, you move the solar panels solely to reduce the, um, uh, purchasing of electricity? Or is it also in part to replace the electrical infrastructure in these four sites?
I mean, I think it'll definitely be more on the delivery side. You know, I think that the, the mechanics themselves, like the, the physical boxes get replaced, um, but overall, I think the savings are gonna just come in on the delivery end.
Well, I'm just trying to figure whether or not some of these are old facilities and they need.
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, the, the pool is under renovation, um, so I think we're just trying to cover, you know, all the pieces and try to move towards a more, um, sustainable facility overall.
One of the things Mayor explained, I mean, when they were selecting, right, the, uh, the facilities, they were trying to find suitable locations that didn't need new roofs or they had suitable land to be able to put the panels on, so. No property, city properties that, you know, may need a new roof at some point in their future or on this list. I do know the mayor has an additional list of properties that he's interested this time was on, but they may, you know, there may be other work that needs happened first before it's ready for the solar panels.
Listen, who are you gonna put them at for the Kingston Point? That's what I'm trying to figure out, what buildings are going on? Is it going on the pavilion?
I think that's going, uh, I think that's going on the garage.
Alright, not so.
The Kingston Point, right, yeah, but I mean, they're, they're in close proximity.
Yeah, the annex is ground out, did right? What we're adding on, I have said, like, those are ground out?
Okay, okay.
Where's the, uh, from the budget address, and now the composting program is announced, is that in? I haven't seen that in the budget.
It's, it's in the budget, um, it's in a couple different items. It doesn't have a big impact in the two thousand twenty-three budget. I don't know where it is.
I think stadium is cool, it's cool.
The pool, yeah, the pool will be, we're, um, working with the contractors to make sure that there is access, yeah. Same with the, the horse barn and the zoo entrance. Going up, yeah.
Where are you gonna be training your kids? To the schools, we're gonna figure out.
Chambers. They're just gonna make up.
An old baseball field, is that?
Chambers is behind, uh, off the wall, they have, all strappy.
Like softball?
We're just gonna, they're just gonna put like a temporary running, for a suit, train for, for track.
Put them on, it'll be the avenue, then they'll learn how to run really.
It's gonna be, I think it's, I haven't come yet, but it's gonna figure out in the springtime. It's just, it's gonna make it, like, temporary, look, a couple lanes, just for practice, everything's gonna be away, we're not gonna have any needs. Just, of course, you gotta get horse track, modify track. And I think it's what goes on, field hockey, no, no, cross, the cross will be happening.
Of field hockey?
Yeah, so I don't know, it's gonna be something to use.
The, I'm looking at the, um, it's mainly in DP, it's actually in, all in DPW.
Oh.
It's all DPW. Yeah, it's, um, it's under, I can give you the account numbers if you look, if you look, uh, it's going to be from eighty-one sixty. Alright, I can probably help.
Eighty-one sixty, one second. One twenty-six.
One twenty-six. It is, um, the New York State grant last line item, we're gonna revenues, yeah, twenty thousand five ninety-six.
I thought the visual cost would be a lot higher than that.
Over, over time it will be, this is just the first year.
What does that grant cover?
Uh, it covers seventy-five percent of costs, which, uh, so on the, on the expense side, I have uh, in other equipment in that same line, eleven thousand, about forty-one thousand dollars under two eleven is for the organic plan. And fifteen thousand four eighty of line item fifty-four eighty-five, that's twenty-one thousand four eighty, fifteen thousand four eighty, that's for the organic plan.
I might just send you an email.
Sure, yeah, yeah, and that's fine.
About it when we were talking about the solar panels, but I know.
That's fine, I can give you that detail that way. And you also, the, the mayor also put additional money in vehicle fuel for DPW before.
If you could, if you could send an email to all of us and detail that, as well as give us a sense of what we're looking at for eventual cost. Um, so I would prefer that a plan like that come to us as a piece of legislation, not as a budget item.
I can, I'll, I'll send you the.
Sorry, no, no, that's alright, it's all good.
Real quick, you just reminded me of the, the twenty thousand dollars for the transportation, do we have to make an amendment for that? For the revenue and expense?
I'm sorry, for what?
For the, for the, um, NOVO transportation, for the education, environmental education programming.
Oh, um.
Do we have to make like an actual?
Is that gonna be next year, is that gonna be next year?
Yeah.
Uh, if it's not in here, might wanna just email us the details.
Sure.
What is this?
Uh, so NOVO is, um, supporting one of our, one of our, one of our larger programs for environmental education, um, programming within the schools and trying to get the kids out, um, at the classroom, doing some of the more field trip type of things. Um, and so that's, you know, with the nine-passenger van, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to have that additional funding to support, um, you know, the bus costs, and we'll have to incur for that. And so NOVO was generous enough to provide us with a twenty thousand dollar, um, sponsorship of that program. And then we received a check to complete use for next year, so my understanding is in order to utilize it, we have to request for it to be, yeah, request for it to be accepted as part of the budget.
That will be an amendment?
It would be, yeah, it would be an amendment, but it would be a wash, right, on both sides, right? So it'd be an increase of revenue made since with impact.
And that twenty thousand covers the whole program, or is everything else in budget?
It will cover, it will cover the needs for the environmental education program and possibly, um, additional funding for the programs themselves, so supplies, any additional, um, materials that our staff may need to conduct the program, it seems like we are, um, able to utilize it for any of those purposes, as long as it's for those, those programs.
Do you know that's what we need?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just have that, yeah.
I'll say, yeah, I'll say.
We'll give money, even though it's, we said like that, that was.
We're just trying to make sure that it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that.
Lindsay, when you send an email, just send us the account numbers.
Sure.
What is their numbers?
Yes.
Uh, one other thing, what I'd appreciate is for the, uh, all the solar panels. If you could actually give us an estimate for, um, the kind of electricity or the cost of electricity, um, so that we can see the, the actual dates when it's estimated that these costs will be recuperated. I'd appreciate that. Anything else for Lindsay?
So you want her to give us an estimate of what the cost savings gonna be by using these solar panels?
Yes, so in other words, if you're gonna ride a pool, I think ninety thousand dollars. When is it that we will make enough savings on the electricity to, to recoup that ninety thousand dollars?
There's, uh, I, there's something there, there's a payback period scheduled.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You have a lot to do before, uh, next week.
Lot of homework.
We just don't want you to be tempted by Thanksgiving.
No, no time for a break.
No, we appreciate all that you do. Anything else for Lindsay?
No, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Lindsay.
I appreciate your eyes, your consideration, thank you.
Um, we're gonna move to the clerk's budget next, but if you could take just a few minutes break?
You want to repeat it real quick? You might have already seen this before, but I don't know, uh, this is the, the, the pool we're running, Lacy, is this to meet that with Lacy, the owner, by Wilson?
It's pretty close, so Lacy's covered this, she's covered, she covers a lot.
She's, um, great.
Yeah, she covers a lot, it's gonna.
Oh, sorry, there's, and she come in.
See, so this is gonna be a common council.
Where is that? City hall, right?
All the chairs and stuff.
Yeah, that would be the building.
Building, okay. This is who we spoke to already.
Is that the company? Oh, I don't know if that's what you're saying. So that's, that's what they'll be providing us with, um, and we're gonna, uh, we're looking to use some of the ARPA funding to get started on that. In the term of what, you know, the first step to be, which is to stabilize the reputation, um, because we can't do any, we can't remove the bleachers, or we can't replace them, we can't do any of the actual, um, construction until that part is done.
Okay. I can help, anything I can do?
Appreciate it. Like I said, we've had these walkthroughs, we've had similar, some visits with, uh, you know, some of these other meeting folks, and it's a matter of now, you and me.
Get back, man.
I'm, like, you got Steve very.
Steve? You're gonna keep that? Not to say.
You can, you can keep that.
Don't worry about.
No, 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 you're good. Alright, thank you, appreciate it. Good holiday.
John?
What's that?
Any more?
Yeah.
Enjoy.
He's studying? Cavalry?
First, seven thousand three hundred.
Cavalry? Terms? Terms?
Yeah, just like timelines and stuff.
We kind of, we find it to be a kind of technique.
I don't go by this.
Where are you?
Hello.
Hello, page thirty-three. You guys already there? What's the, uh, what's the exciting news in the clerk budget?
Really nothing exciting. No. I don't have any, I don't have any big asks this year.
You got, right, someone replaced, you have, uh, you have a deputy clerk, right?
I have, I currently have a provisional deputy clerk, we're still waiting for the civil, civil service exam, uh, results.
She was at the last council meeting, I don't think I've seen her.
Yes.
I met her, I met her, not in the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, he introduced herself, and she seen me. I know her function, yes.
Um, what is multi-peril liability?
That part of the, um, insurance.
For what? Do we have a Tasmanian devil now?
Where's that?
That is, that's our citywide insurance, that's, that's for liability, property coverage.
Right.
Vehicles.
Who is that? Oh, that's under varies.
Director of officers.
Yeah, it's, uh, where is that in the budget?
Uh, that is in it's nineteen, seventeen, one, two, thirty. So lease age forty-seven, forty-seven, basically the increase in salaries is a contractor or a leasing.
Yes.
He said nicely, yeah, I had a question mark, yeah, a hundred thousand. And I said, what's that again, liability for what, John? What's that? What's this multi?
It's, it's, it's citywide insurance policy, it's, it's our insurance for all life, for liability, property coverage, including, you know, vehicles, buildings.
Citywide.
Shalala, citywide insurance. Property and liability, directors, officers, cybersecurity, uh, okay.
Okay. Um, what's there? I thought there was gonna, we were gonna see something about some office furniture in your budget?
Uh, it wasn't office furniture, we are in desperate need of a couple of new computers.
Uh-huh.
Currently, I only, I have the only computer that can leave the building, so, um, if Jody were to do any night meetings, and sometimes we do have, have them on the same time, um, particularly ethics would meet the same night that you would all meet, and, um, for her to be able to do a meeting, she would need to have a computer that can go home.
So where is that then in the budget? Cause, uh, I'd see data processing stuff, but it all seems to be going down, not up.
Um, I asked for.
Office and equipment furniture, is that it? Four seventy-six, they're in?
Let me look for it.
Two thousand dollars, if I have my.
Yeah. First two thousand dollars I asked for.
I have office equipment and furniture.
Okay. Huh.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll just mind it for that, okay.
So it looks, uh, so it looks like if you requested two thousand, then a thousand has been deleted from data processing equipment up above, okay? Um.
And the other apartment is the one you tell, huh?
Yeah, weren't we talking about like new chairs for city hall and tables, and is that possibility, or is that?
You already passed that.
We did?
Yeah, you gave, you gave me thirty thousand dollars for, um, for that, and that all should be arriving any week now, everything's been ordered.
Is that a cover conference room one, or is that just conference, I know we, I remember doing conference room two, I remember the mayor's office, and, and something like in the hallway. Was it conference room one too? One has.
Conference, conference room one is getting new carpet. Um, we're refinishing the table. Uh, we're not, because there's, the table that you're sitting at is, there's nothing wrong with that, um, actually Eddie Boyle is going to sand and, and refinish that table. And, um, um, Brian Wattman was able to find less expensive, uh, furniture, and that will include chairs for the room you're currently in, yep.
So the only thing that we have funded is any new chairs in chambers.
Chairs.
Correct, so conference room two, conferences one and two will be getting new carpet next week, actually. And, uh, the furniture has been ordered for, um, conference room two. And, um, we're still trying to track down the chairs for conference room one. But it, what it all already was in that money that you already allocated.
Alrighty.
Dollars.
This is the only thing.
Yeah, because some of the furniture, the chairs breaking, breaking apart last week, I almost fell out of one, so I just wanted, had a little thing, but we're gonna get some new carpet and furniture, okay?
As long as they can go on.
I think, yeah.
I, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about it, because that's something that we put off, so that's the one thing, is your chairs. Because I, I mean, at least your chair is fine in chambers, right?
Yeah, my chair is fine.
Yeah, so that's, I don't know, you guys want that, or, I don't know, I've heard a lot of complaints from council members about the chairs.
Yeah, and I think it's just that, uh, this really I want people out there, it's not our chairs, we're not the only ones using them. And so, people, you know, they just think that the common, I mean, the furniture's being used at this time by other visitors to the, in city hall, so, and.
Yeah, especially, especially the alderman chairs, they're.
Yeah, they're getting moved around, uh, everything else, they are starting to break down, I mean, I'm not sure if they've been fixed or not. I mean, I know, uh, alderman, uh, Oliveri's chair was broken last month. And so I'm not sure if these are replaced then, at some point we might have to take a look at what furniture's in there.
Um, that must be a budget discussion right now, or there's gonna be a problem with my contingency at this point, right, so we don't necessarily have to do it now, or?
I mean, you, the count, I mean, this committee could, could talk about it now, I think the issue, the lay issue is the estimate of what the cost will be, right? So somebody would have to get that for it.
Yeah, I mean, I know they were trying to fix the chair, I'm sure Mike's chair has been worked on that.
But it seems like there's at least one chair, I don't know if everybody, they're probably gonna move right now, so then you don't, not.
You don't know.
Same.
Next week, I might.
So, hey Liz, if we were gonna ask for a, um, an estimate for the cost to replace the nine chairs in council chambers, give a sense of how busy are you right now, uh, when might you be able to find something else, and put somebody on it?
Um, I can ask, um, Brian Wattman to add that to, um, but I don't know if, I actually don't know if he's even in this week, because I'm off now for tomorrow on Wednesday. Um, do you know John?
So I think then we'll just follow the you said he's not here, or he isn't. Um, I kind of think it'd be better just to go the contingency route anyway. I don't see you need to have a special speed on this.
No.
We do want to get it done, but also it's not the greatest time this week to try to put people on something. So, I don't know, would you be able to ask Brian, is that the proper procedure?
Yeah, I can ask him to, um, to see what he can find.
Well, yeah, if he could do it, and if, if we got the information by the twenty-eighth, then we could talk about putting it in the budget. If we don't have it by then, we could talk about putting it into contingency instead, if, if it looks like a feasible amount.
Okay.
Right? Is that okay with everybody?
Can you just sound your list?
Hello?
Uh, Tony and then Barbara?
And then Barbara and a city hall building maintenance and maintenance of building, a visa, uh, sixteen twenty, I'm assuming that's the, uh, maintenance of buildings, at the visitor's center?
No, that's city hall.
Where's the visitor's?
Is, uh, is different.
Under what?
Visitor center is, is a different line.
You know where it is, John?
Visitor center is, uh, is all under, is combined with, uh, Department sixteen twenty.
Yeah, sixteen twenty.
Part of sixteen twenty.
So sixteen twenty?
Sixteen twenty is city hall and visitor's center, it's, it's.
I'm just trying to think of that line, either maintenance of building is that for the visitor's center.
For fifty-four forty-three? Sixteen twenty-five four four three?
No, I had, I had four four three, maintenance of bills of forty thousand.
Yes, that's for whole, whole buildings.
That's for whole buildings? Alright. So I know that's being fixed right now, right, the visitor's center? And then what is a long-term thing for that? I know there's been some discussion about maybe some, and moving some departments down there. My options is either we, after we pay for this cost to this thing, we either sell it, or we get a new city office in there. And I mean, just that, put a new roof on and not use the building at all. It's, I don't understand the logic to that, and we're gonna put that much money into a new roof, and then the building's just gonna sit there, and you know, I think, I think, I think the city really needs to look at, and possibly selling that building, once we put this new roof, roof on. And because it's been discussion about departments that move down there, but then there's also been discussion about the lack of parking, and to have departments down there, right, Steve?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think when we first started talking about the building, the plan was to sell it.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. And I don't think, it doesn't seem we're, we're gonna use it, we don't have parking down there. There's minimal parking as it is, I mean, we're gonna be taking up parking spots for, for businesses down there if we use that. Um, you know, it would seem like it would be a good time right now to sell, sell the building, we could, you know. If we're not gonna use it, but we have to fix it.
You gotta be ready to fix it now, man.
You know, it's gonna be really damaged if we don't fix the roof.
I just really think that we need to, once we get this roof fixed, that we really need to, please really look hard at selling this building.
And I also see that they're not putting anything into, no electricity, no, we have nothing budgeted for it?
It's, it's all part of Department sixteen twenty.
Oh.
Eighty-fourty-one.
There's money in there to maintain the building. But, um, I agree that you know, decision has to be not keeping or selling, I think, I, the mayor, I believe, is inclined to, uh, use it for city offices, um, but he hasn't expressed a plan on it yet. As to, you know, what offices would be located there.
Right. Alright. That's all I had to say.
Barbara Hill?
Uh, yeah, um, back on the issue of the conference room, um, how is it in, is the AV equipment in your budget or in another, is it in AV? So in terms of, I find it hard to hear what's being said in the room. And it doesn't seem like other people do, except once in a while, like Michelle, you, is that Michelle there?
It is, hi Barbara.
Hey, I've heard you say you can't hear, but, um, and others, so I don't know, is there a better way, like, for the meeting right now that's going on? For like a pod to be put in the middle of the table or something, because it's hard to hear, even when I have my hearing aids in, so I don't know if I'm imagining it, or but, um, is there, is this the state-of-the-art equipment now that we have installed?
Are you talking about conference room where we're in right now, or are you talking about chambers?
Where you are right now, chambers is impossible.
Chambers and the cussets are really hard, and Kyle worked to make it as best as it could be.
I can't hear you, I can't hear what you're saying clearly.
I, I would talk to Kyle, but the equipment we have right now is state-of-the-art, this is the equipment that is, is supposed to be working really well, so I would talk to Kyle.
Alright, both about this conference room and the chambers.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's definitely hard to hear the conversation here when you're like online and participating remotely.
I can't imagine that it would be expensive to get some kind of pod, some kind of speaker, uh, whatever, to go on the microphone, to go on the table.
Table?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had the last, my last employment, we had a big, like, little spaceship sitting in the middle. And you could, you could move it around if you wanted, it picked up really well.
Yeah, I've been to places that have them in the middle of the table, or they have them suspended on the ceiling.
Some place a little more centrally located.
Right.
I mean, I can when I was doing it from home, I I was lost, I couldn't hear, I couldn't understand, not that I couldn't hear, I couldn't understand it usually.
Yeah, I hear a lot of people in the community complaining too.
I've never heard anybody complain, so.
I mean, we can look into it, I mean, the doors reach out to Kyle and see what kind of cost would that be? I don't know what the setup would be.
It's just a little module, you know, I don't think it could be astronomical.
I, I, I have never had any difficulty, I, I've never had any trouble hearing you or understanding you, um, when somebody's wearing a mask, it's a little muffled, but other than that, I, and I'm on every meeting, I, I don't have any issues hearing you.
Alright.
Are there any other applications that we could go over? From the office facilities, over the hall?
That's all, it's all part of the whole. I don't think. Any other departments for these? And it's.
I have you. Common council. Okay, you have made that, I, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we did that the other night.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it.
Everything is on the bar, it's just, yeah, their apartments.
The registrar's office is off, also in my department.
Yeah, page fifty-five.
Page what?
Fifty-five. Fifty-five.
So, on the second page of the baroness's department, or on two.
Not much changes in there, though, right?
No.
Barbara?
Uh, yeah, I couldn't hear too well, so, what am I, am I the one reaching out about equipment for that table? And, you know, if I have problems hearing, and I know Alyssa says she never has a problem, but there are people besides me who say they have a problem. So, I don't wanna be discounted on that, and I'm wondering how I best follow up, cause I can't really hear what you're saying in.
Reach out to Kyle.
Okay, but how does it, so if it's a budget item, will it, if I reach out to him tomorrow, will I be able to get some action on it, like in this budget, or is just some future project?
We may be able to add it in, or we could do it in the future.
We can find, we can purchase something out of contingency.
If you don't make it.
Okay. Right, I can't, I can't hear you so.
I will send you an email, Barbara.
Thank you. All right, thanks.
Barbara?
Yes.
Is, is, how old is your computer? Maybe it's your.
This is a really good computer with great sound, I have hearing aids, and it's echo. Like, in the beginning of the meeting, it wasn't so bad, and then it's just, I don't know, it's variable, but, um, it's, it's hard for me, it really makes it hard, um, you know, when I'm remote, and then in the big room, I heard from Bartek that really, if you're on the Zoom, you hear better than you are in the chambers, cause the equipment is better now. So, it's hard, you know, I wanna show up in person to things, cause it's better optics, you get to meet people, you really get to commune. But sometimes, you know, I'm trying to figure out the combo of where I don't have to double
All right.
watch something, or have to call somebody to find out, or do an extra email to find out what happened. So, uh, for me, with the hearing, I'll just say hearing disability, it seems like, cause nobody else really seems to have the problem, um, you know, I'll have to make my own accommodation, but if it's as simple as, in, at least in this room, to have a pod, I'll follow up, I'll follow up with Kyle.
I already followed up with Kyle, Barbara.
Already?
I already got the phone, so he's gonna give, he's gonna call me back with a price. He says the si- system right now, this, the speaker on the top can't have a pod here in order for that speaker to work, it doesn't work. So he's gonna look at price to see what the next level was up, and he'll give me a call back. So I'll have that answer for the committee or the group, probably later on tonight. Okay?
All right, great, thank you, Tony.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, anything else? Anything else?
I wish, I did probably. Call it, yeah.
I'll take that for you, in that case, uh, we will call this meeting to a close, uh, eight ten.
Eight ten, well, seven twenty, we'll all do.